Peter? Are you muted?
Paula.
Hi.
Since you're with us, I'm throwing it to you. I just sent you my notes.
Okay.
They've got the boss. They don't need the second string.
No, you can leave it.
Okay.
All right. So, going to Charlie Baker's March 12 order, we are able to do this meeting via Zoom. We'll do a quick roll call for attendance. Dan Spencer is present. Michael Connor.
Yep.
Don Martinez.
Present.
Cynthia McNulty.
She's on mute.
Sorry, I just got the notice. Hi, I'm here.
And Mr. Biagi.
Present.
All right, fantastic. So, we have a 7:00 PM public hearing. The Bellingham Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 1st, 2020 at 7:00 PM. The hearing's purpose is to discuss a proposed grant application for fiscal year 2019 CDBG-CV funding under the Massachusetts CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Program for the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. This is a special funding round resulting from an appropriation through the CARES Act of 2020. This application, the town of Bellingham, will be the lead community in a regional application that may include any or all of the following municipalities: Franklin, Foxborough, Medfield, Norfolk, Walpole, and Rantham. The town intends to seek funding to provide, number one, grants to businesses defined as microenterprises, those with five or fewer employees, including the owner, and, number two, funding to support public social services activities designed to assist persons who have been impacted by the COVID-19 virus. Maximum funding available is $400,000 per individual community. So, looking out here, I see Paula, you are on this meeting.
Yes.
Jump in and kind of give us the overview of what we're looking at.
Okay. I apologize that I'm not with you in video, but it's easier for me to be able to use my screen for looking at notes and if you have questions to look things up. As part of the funding-
We can see Peter, so that's okay.
Yes, and he's much more-
That's a scary thought, isn't it?
I have a great face for radio. What can I tell you?
I am with you there.
As part of the funding that was made available by Congress to address the COVID-19 pandemic, the state of Massachusetts received and is making available $19.65 million. Of that amount, $9.65 million is being made available through a competitive grant application to municipalities to conduct two types of activities. The first is to assist microenterprise businesses, defined as businesses with five or fewer employees, including the owners, who've been affected by COVID-19 negatively. Funding can be used to help pay operating costs, including rent, utilities, payroll, that sort of thing. And the second activity is to assist public service agencies who are providing services to low and moderate income folks in direct response to COVID-19. The state has made it clear that it is going to strongly favor regional applications, led by communities with experience managing CDBG grant programs. So, Bellingham will be leading an application that includes six communities: Bellingham, Foxborough, Franklin, Medfield, Walpole, and Rantham. All six of these communities have posted notice of this public hearing, and we hope are participating this evening. The timeframe for preparing the grant is very short. Applications are due to the state by June 12. The goal is to make funding, the state's goal is to make funding decisions and award the grants sometime in July and get the money out to those who need it as quickly as possible, but over the next year. Community Opportunities Group is working with Bellingham and the five other participating communities to prepare the grant application. The public hearing, this public hearing is one of the methods we're using to reach out, to obtain public input and support, and to compile data regarding the level and degree of need. You are being asked to weigh in regarding the needs within your communities. Anyone participating in this Zoom meeting who wishes to ask a question or make a comment will be provided an opportunity to do so, and we're accepting written comments until noon on Wednesday, two days from now. Business surveys are now posted on each of the communities' website, and we're asking businesses to complete those surveys. They're very brief, but we're asking that they complete them as soon as possible, but no later than June 9, and to share them through their own networks for people who don't see it on the town's websites, don't hear about it. We have some economic development committees in various towns that are sending it out through their own. We are also reaching out through the human and public service agencies in each town to determine what needs have arisen or increased due to the pandemic and related shutdowns. For example, needs for increased services from food pantries, Meals on Wheels, and other nutritional programs has already been seen to be a fairly clear need. If our grant application is successful, Bellingham will administer the program. All funding will be distributed as grants to eligible businesses and public service agencies. The maximum that a single community can receive through this grant is 400,000. The maximum grant available to a single microenterprise business will be 10,000. However, need must be demonstrated, and the funds are designed to be distributed to those who need them quickly, again, over the next 12 months. For that reason, and the fact that so many communities will be applying for a limited pool of funds, it's important that we carefully estimate the actual need, and it's not likely that we will approach the maximums for either all of the microbusinesses or the individual communities. There are income eligibility guidelines, funding's designed to assist those at or below 80% of the area median income. Eligible microenterprises will be qualified if the owners are income-eligible. Public service agencies must demonstrate that a majority of those they serve are income-eligible. As an example, for this area that the six communities are located in, a family of four is eligible if they earn up to $96,250 annually. So, it's a fairly generous income eligibility guideline in this area. That's sort of an overview of the grant application we're assisting with. I'm happy to answer any questions. I do want to just mention that in addition to this pool of money tied to the grant application, there's another $10 million of the funding that the state is providing through regional agencies, the regional housing agencies, that will be used, that will be available to people to use to pay arrears of rent, mortgage, utilities, real estate taxes, that sort of thing. So, there is a pool of funding that will not go through the municipalities. It'll go through the regional agencies that administer the existing rent arrears for Families in Transition Program or RAFT. But I wanted to just mention that so that you know that that other pool of money is available, because I'm sure that you are all, particularly those of you who work for the communities, being inundated with people having trouble paying rents and mortgages and taxes and that sort of thing. So, that's kind of the overview, and if people have questions, that's what we're here-
So, Paula, just a quick question, and obviously, I think we want to take advantage of any grant opportunities we could possibly be in line for. With regards to the microenterprises, and I could be ignorant to this, would they still be eligible if they received, or if they were eligible for the PPP program?
We have to demonstrate that you're not duplicating money. So, if the PPP covered a certain period of time, and then they were continuing to have struggles, for instance, if the PPP covered two months from March to May, and then they applied in June to cover expenses that they needed assistance with in June and July, or July and August, whatever it was, that's not duplication. So, it's kind of, you have to show that it's not duplicated, they're not getting paid twice for the same thing.
Right. All right. That was the only question I had.
If I could add-
My colleagues. Peter?
If I could add, what Paula just said about the period of time, no business will be able to go back earlier than last week. So, the clock would start ticking last week.
Okay.
Moving forward.
All right.
I have a question.
Mr. Biagi.
This is Bob Biagi. I'm curious, with maybe Jim or somebody else would know, do we know how many microbusinesses we have in Bellingham that would fall into that category of five or fewer?
Sure, so, we actually have a decent amount. So, when you stop to think about all those small businesses that we do have in town, many of them actually qualify under microenterprises. Though I'm not, we'll have to take a close look to see if they are income-eligible. We took a preliminary review of all of our business certificates, and we have over 200 that would qualify as five or under. And we are also putting out, as Paula mentioned, the survey online, and we sent that through the VDA and others to try and see if there's more out there.
So, the hope is that, I mean, it says about the maximum funding being 400,000. Is that what our grant will be put forth, so 2.4 million for the six communities? Is that what we're striving for?
Peter, you want to field this? Peter? Did we lose him? Peter has a tendency himself. Do you want to answer this, Peter, or do you want me to?
We lost Peter, I think.
Okay.
There we go.
All right. They, we, there is fierce competition. There are 314 communities that are eligible for this money. They're applying in regions, basically, predominantly. So, 9.65 million, 400,000 is the most that a single community can. So, you could do the math and say 400,000 times six communities. They're going to be really annoyed with us if we can't move that much money, and it's going to be really hard to move that much money. And so, we're thinking closer to 150,000 per community is probably, over the six communities, is probably realistic, because we've only got, unlike a regular CDBG grant, where we've got 18 months to two years to spend it, they want us to get it out the door as soon as possible. There is also a follow-up round of funding. They haven't decided what they're going to do with it yet. It could be similar activities, or it could be something different, but the state has an additional 20-some-odd million dollars coming, it's come in from HUD, that will be a second round of funding. So, we want to be realistic, and that's why we're trying to struggle to pull all this data together so quickly, to try and get a sense of what we could realistically spend in the timeframe.
Okay, thank you, Paula, for that clarification.
Are there any restrictions? This is Don Martinez. Are there any restrictions on the type of microbusiness or microindustry?
There are some.
What are they?
Well, if you have a dispensary, it's not eligible.
Okay, we don't?
Real estate activities are not eligible. Real estate and leasing activities. There are several others. Peter, do you want to? There, but most, most small, financial, little corner stores, landscaping businesses, you know, most small businesses will be eligible. They have carved out a handful that are not.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Paula, this is Cindy. Unfortunately, my connection dropped out. I didn't hear what the dollar amount was that you gave for the income eligibility per household?
For a family of four, it's based on family size. So, for a family of four, it would be $96,250 a year, annual income.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And we can qualify in a couple of different ways. For the microbusinesses, we can use their gross income from their most recently filed tax return if they're eligible, which is 2018 or 19. Because, obviously, a lot of the businesses that are being impacted by this, their income has gone to hell during this time period. So, some of them that wouldn't be eligible based on the tax returns might be eligible. We'd have to then do a regular income certification using current documents, bank statements and income documents. So, if in the last eight weeks, we can project that forward. So, if they're not, they weren't eligible based on their prior tax return, but they're eligible now, then they're eligible. So, we have a couple ways to get to that.
So, it seems like this would be most impactful to, you know, the sole proprietors out there that may have one or two employees. Obviously, you know, you may have some small partnerships or corporations, but it seems like that's who this is kind of geared for.
Yes, it's really targeted to small businesses, and they've clarified that five employees means five bodies, basically, not five, 10 part-time people doesn't accumulate into five employees. So, it's actual persons.
Any other comments from my colleagues on the board? All right. Hearing none, this is a public hearing. Do we have any comments from anybody out there in the viewing audience?
Dan, it's Mary. Hi, I just have a quick question. So, I know we were focusing a lot on the business side, but if I look at the eligibility requirements or the grant opportunities for public social services activities, will those same individual limits apply to those agencies providing service? Or have you sort of set a grant threshold for those social service agencies?
Are you talking about the grant per agency?
Well, if I'm reading this correctly, it says funding to support public social services activities. So, I'm thinking like the food pantry. And so, if the food pantry qualifies, is there an upper limit for the grant award for an agency like that?
Yeah, we're, we're, the process right now of reaching out to the agencies to get a sense of what their unmet needs are, so that we can try and calculate what they could realistically expend on their increased demand over the course of the time we have to spend the money. So, I'm kind of thinking we're probably, and then based on funding we've done for food pantries in the past, I think we're probably in the neighborhood of maybe $30,000 per agency, serving a community, generally, it is one major food pantry in each community. But that's all subject to what the data comes back as. And for certain social service agencies are different. Food is particularly easy to administer, because we can use a self-declaration form. We're basically providing money to the food pantries to buy food and supplies that they're then giving to the people who are eligible. So, we don't have to do a whole income certification for each recipient from the pantries. We just do a self-declaration form where they just tell us what their income is. So, that's an easier program to administer.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any further comments from anyone out there? All right, hearing none, I will take, or entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, moved.
Mr. Biagi, do we have a second? Mr. Connor, beat you, Don.
That's okay.
So, we're looking to take two motions here. I will read both of the motions, and I will look for someone to move the motion. So, vote number one, to approve the submission of a regional grant application for fiscal year 2019 CDBG-CV funding under the Massachusetts CDBG program from the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development. That would be the first motion. Do I have anyone to move that motion?
Move, so moved.
We have a first, and Mr. Martinez, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Connor. Any further comments or discussion?
Mr. Spencer, it's Don. It's Don, just a quick question. Who on our end, is it going to be Jim that's going to be working with Paula and Peter? How does that work?
Primarily, and then I'm also, will be in touch with your council and aging director and some of the public service agencies. But Jim has been named our point person.
Okay, just, great.
Hearing good news.
When in doubt, default to Jim.
Yeah. All volunteers take one step backwards.
All right, so, here we go, further discussion, comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, zero. Vote number two is to authorize the chairman of the board of selectmen and the town administrators sign any documents needed in connection to submitting the grant application. Do I have anyone to motion to move that?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Biagi. Do we have a second? Second.
Second.
McNulty. All right. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero, five, zero. Thank you very much, Paula. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peter, really appreciate all the work you do on behalf of, on behalf of this town, surrounding towns.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, so, next on our agenda is the formal acceptance of our small business grant that Mr. Cupfer worked and applied for. So, Jim, you want to just touch on that? I know we've, everyone's kind of been familiar with it, but if you can just kind of give us the Reader's Digest version of what we got, and we'll take a humble vote to accept it.
Yeah, it sounds good. So, a few months back, the Attorney General's Office released a request for proposals to seek small business grant funding to all the towns in the community, or in the state, excuse me. And 12 communities across the state received grant funding, four of which are towns, so the rest are gateway communities. Go ahead and mute. One moment. So, that's the problem when I'm also the controller of everything. So, yeah, so, the purpose of the program, the purpose of the program is to provide Bellingham Small Businesses an opportunity to request a one-time grant award to be used to help address fixed debt, payroll, accounts payable, lost sales, and other working capital expenses that could have been recognized had COVID-19 pandemic not occurred. And that's really lifted from the Attorney General's, you know, request for proposals. That's what they're seeking. So, we mimic that. We requested 50, we got 30,000. So, that $30,000 will go out to the business community. So, this is for small businesses, so different from microenterprises, where the small businesses, 50 employees or less. So, there should be some significant need out there. We capped it at up to 5,000. So, it's not big dollars for the small businesses, but it's something to help them through this time. And so, we thought it was a viable and worthwhile endeavor to seek the funding. So, we're excited to get that funding. And so, the next step here is, once the funding is accepted, we'll issue the applications to the website and push it out to every business that's eligible. And hopefully, we can, we can help some small businesses in town.
Nice.
All right. Thanks, Jim. So, I know, hold on a second. I know, Jim, you sent out the, to the Economic Subcommittee, the copy of the application. Who ultimately is approving the request?
Yeah, so, I believe it does need to come back to this body here, the Selectmen. So, how we, how I anticipate this functioning is the applications would come to my office. I would coordinate them, provide some recommendations between myself, Mary McKinnon, and Dennis Frain will all review the application, provide some recommendations to the Economic Development Subcommittee, who's been working with all the businesses over the course of this pandemic. You know, and then ultimately, we will hand those off to the Economic Development Subcommittee, who will make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Select will ultimately make a final decision that would then issue these grants. The hope here is that, you know, we can turn this around fairly quickly, though, because, obviously, you know, the small dollars, but if we can help now, I think it would help more so than, you know, two, three months from now. So, yeah, so if we can get that moving within like the next 30 days of, you know, issuing the applications next week to, you know, approval from the Selectmen within the next 30 days, I think that would be the goal.
Yeah, if we can give like one business, you know, one month's rental relief, that's still doing better than nothing, so. Bob, I think you, was it you, you had something, Bob?
Yeah, you took one of it there, asking that first question. Obviously, we don't know the timeframe. I appreciate you saying that we want to get it on the fast track and get it done as soon as possible. You know, so, what kind of timeframe will we be looking at for the applications to be submitted by the small businesses?
Yeah, so, the thought process, and I'll be talking more about it with the Subcommittee tomorrow, but the thought processes give them at least a week, two weeks, to get all the documents in order, because they do need to provide some, you know, some evidence of lost revenue over time. So, you know, they probably are well-prepared for that, but giving them a small window, at least, that's going to be the biggest gap of time is allowing for the businesses to get prepared. But then after that, you know, commitment from staff to review that and hand it off to the Economic Development Committee shouldn't take too much time at all. And then I'll just be coordinating with Hillary to get a Selectmen's meeting together shortly thereafter.
Okay, and does it, does it fall into that kind of double-dipping that Dan was talking about earlier, about the PPP versus what we just learned about? And this one, is there any kind of crossover that they can do?
This is completely separate. These funds are from the Attorney General's Office that stem from some legal funding that happened over the course of the past two years. So, that's extra revenue that's sitting there for us.
Nice, thank you.
All right. Any further-
Chris, quick question. Dan, Jim, when is that going up on the website? I've spoken with a few small businesses in town, and they're anxious to fill out an application.
Yep, so, I'm preparing it for review with the Economic Development Committee tomorrow. So, as soon as they get their blessing and make any appropriate edits, I'm hoping to get that up either tomorrow evening or maybe the following morning.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any further comments? Mary?
Mr. Chair, it's okay, do you mind if I ask a question?
No, please.
In light of the presentation from Paula and Peter just a moment ago, would it make sense to sort of target the program, Jim, that you're talking about, towards the businesses that are not the microbusinesses? Because, you know, Paula's program, and, you know, they have not received the award. However, this particular company that we've done, that we've been working with, has been very successful in obtaining their grant opportunities. So, I'm holding out hope that they will be awarded the program that we just heard about. Would it make more sense to sort of take a look at those microbusinesses and sort of hold them for grant awards through the program that we just heard about from COG and look at those other businesses that may have eight to 10 to 15 employees for this particular program?
Yeah, I think it's, we'll need to be mindful of that as time moves on. The good part about this is time is kind of lining up, so that, once we get these applications in, between the three of us, the staff at least, at first blush, will be able to start vetting these and say, well, these are all very competitive, but it looks like we are in the funding round for microenterprises. So, that could be an easy response to those microenterprises that, while we weren't able to assist you in this grant round, it looks like we'll be, you know, there will be another funding round coming shortly thereafter.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to formally accept the grant, the Attorney General's grant for small business release, release, relief, in the amount of $30,000.
So, moved.
We have a first, and Mr. Martinez, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, Mrs. McNulty. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I opposed, I approved, Dan. I apologize, I was on mute, and I was talking to myself like usual.
All right.
Applications for the first one we were talking about with Paula and Peter, and this grant application process, will they be similar? Like, is it going to be the first- Like, is it going to be the frustration of I already filled out one, now I'm going to fill in another? Are they looking for the same type of information from the small businesses?
There will be a lot of the similar documentation. However, with Paula and Peters, that's a, that's a CDBG, so there is some heavy lifting there. And so we're, we're hoping to make ours kind of as minimal as possible for the small business side, but with the federal funds, there tends to be quite a bit of administration.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kupfer. Next is our budget transfers. Mary? We got fiscal year '20, and then we want to touch on some of the fiscal '21 budgeting.
Sorry, I have to be quick on that unmute button. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to hold up for you a schedule that looks like this, and this was emailed out to all of you late last night, I believe. And so this is the budget transfer schedule for FY '20 that I am requesting action on. For those of you who have been on the board, you'll recognize that this is a pretty routine and customary action that is allowed under Mass General on chapter 44, section 33B. What this allows us to do is to present budget transfers to both the board of selectmen as well as the finance committee to take care of some housekeeping issues within the current year's budget. So this particular schedule, on the left-hand side, you will see that the funding sources that are available for these transfers, the funding that is being used, and on the right-hand side of the schedule where those transfers are going to. The total amount of transfers being requested is $155,733. The bulk of that is one particular line item, excuse me, which is the fire department overtime. And if you'll recall, I think we've had conversations over the course of several months where we've had some firefighters who have been injured and we've had to backfill some shifts with overtime. And we've also had some firefighters out due, due to the recent pandemic where we've also filled with overtime. So this would provide the appropriation necessary for FY '20 for us to, to cover that deficit in their budget. Other line items are various housekeeping matters that need to be taken up in the various departments as listed on the schedule in front of you. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any on a particular line item.
So yeah, I think this one's pretty standard. The money was delegated for one place and we're just going to shift it to pay off deficits from another area. So I have no other questions. This is the easy part of your, your night time, right, Mary?
Hopefully, we'll have a continuum.
All right. Any, any questions, comments from my colleagues?
None.
All right. So hearing none, we'll take a standing motion to approve the fiscal '20 budget transfer as presented by our CFO.
So moved.
We have a first, and Mr. Connor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Biagi. Any additional comments, concerns, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, zero. Bob, did you get your mute button off? You good?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note that I will need an original signature from you on this document. So next time you pop in, we'll leave a copy for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Did you want to talk FY '21, Mary, or are we, we good there?
FY '21, Dan, I think we need to spend a little time on. You've got the spreadsheet from, from Mary, and as you know, for the last month or so, my audio, okay?
Yeah, you're good.
Good. Yeah, for the last month or so, we've been talking about FY '21 revenues and what's going to happen at the state level with regard to local aid. And we haven't really got anything definitive at this point in time. We've had conversations with Senator Fattman and Representative Soder, and, and they're holding, you know, waiting as well, just, just as, as we are. At this point in time, we've plugged in, you can see on the, on the summary that Mary provided, we're estimating our local aid would go from $11,541,841 to $10,490,841 for a reduction of state aid of $1,051,000, along with local receipts that we're looking at $782,379 less than what we were looking at pre-COVID. So we're also looking at the senior workoff program. The board has authorized $125,000 annually, up to $125,000. And what we're looking at doing is reducing that amount as well. So that'd be coming down by 75,000. A lot of the seniors have, most of the seniors have not been participating in the program since COVID began, but we'll be looking at, this year anyway, reducing the amount that we have. And that goes, that goes more on a, a calendar year, but it hits the recap sheet in the fall. So we would have to make those adjustments from this point going forward. So, and we already have, really. We're only allowing essential senior tax workoff people, if you will, to, to be involved in the, the program right now. So the total reduction, $1,783,379. It's a big number, and, and Mary and I have been meeting with departments, and we've been giving updates also in the, the morning meetings. So I'm sure you've been following a little bit about it. We've also been discussing, obviously closely, working closely with the school superintendent and the business manager. And we've come up with some recommendations, presented them all to the departments, and you've got those before you. On the positive side, we did receive the COVID grant of $1,500,000 approximately, and that can be used for COVID-related expenses, and that will help to ease the impact of, of some of these cuts. Things like police overtime, in particular, fire overtime, some of those things, some of those activities. So the, the net result is we're looking at a rather substantial reduction on the budget, but fortunately, we'll have some alternative funding for some of that. The total reduction you see on the expense side is $917,192. The schools have reduced their budget, as you can see, by $564,000. And they are actually meeting tomorrow night, and I'll be attending that meeting, as will Mary, and we're looking for them to take a look at their budget and see if there isn't an ability to provide some additional reductions that would be offset with the COVID money. So it would be true cuts. It'd basically be a different funding source, if you will. So it's an awful lot. I know you've been staying apprised of it. We've had quite a few conversations with regard to it. All but for the COVID money coming in, that $1.5 million, we would be looking at hard cuts in all these areas, but fortunately, we've got some backfilling that we're able to do. It sets us up for a very difficult FY '22 unless things change dramatically in the coming year, because I don't think the state or the federal government will be coming forward with another big round of funding as they did, or as they're doing this year. But I think we worry about FY '22 after we get FY '21 done. And and so that, that's kind of the big picture of where it's at. I know you've had an opportunity to review it, and I've spoken to, spoken to you about it in the past. Any questions that you might have for Mary or me?
Yeah, so I, I just want to make a comment that, you know, with, with the lack of local receipts, the decreased local receipts and the uncertainty of state aid, looking at the sheet that Mary had sent out, that, yeah, we're going to have to do some cutting. It is not as painful as it could have been. And I think that's a complete tribute to the, the entire financial team that we have in this town, as well as department heads. And I think if you want to compare us to other entities or other municipalities around the state that, you know, like you said, 20, 21 is not going to be, you know, I think we'll be all right in 21. 22 is going to be a whole different ballpark, but let's get through 21 for, well, let's get through 20. The physical year, the annual year of 2020, because who knows what's coming next. But, so I just, I just want to, you know, say thank you to, to Mary and her team and Dennis and all the departments out there. And I know Peter's on as well. There's some difficult choices that we're all making, and I think we're, we're doing, I think we're doing well comparatively speaking to some, some other towns. So just want to send out kudos. Anyone else on the board, colleagues?
If I could, Dennis and, and Mary, when we had our budget review, we had the, the full book that, that showed what each department was. Do we have a document that shows at the department level what, how those numbers have changed? That can be shared. And from a comfort factor, and I've sat in a lot of school committee meetings, it seems as if the school department has, has dramatic cuts in things like supplies, and if people aren't aware of it, dramatic staffing cuts. I just want to sense that the pain has been proportionate across the town. But also noting that both our fire and police are dramatically understaffed already. So, you know, I don't know where that other money would have come from, but I do want to get a sense that going forward, that everyone shared the pain.
Absolutely. I think that's the message that we, we've tried to share with the school department as well, Michael, that, that, that there are cuts, unfortunately, on the school side. A lot of it's tied to the charter school and the $2 plus $10 that's going out the door to, to charter schools. So that really is what set in motion, obviously, the need for the, the prop two and a half override. And, you know, obviously, we, we're, we're not at the same point we were pre-COVID. If, if we were looking at that override now, I, I think it might be a different number, but, but I think.
Just to follow up to that, if I could, Dennis. So, I mean, we're, we're in a situation with COVID that, you know, hopefully the senior center is opening sooner than later, but we had some talks about doing 1/12 budgets. Are we affected in many areas where we won't be spending money in July and August? That is built into the budget and it wasn't cut because we didn't know, or we don't know how extensive COVID is going to be to that? And that money might be freed up even if it's $25,000 or $50,000 because we don't spend it in July and August?
No, those, those adjustments could be made in November, but we have not made those adjustments at this point in time anticipating that a library or senior center would be closed.
Yeah, I mean, you talked to us yesterday, or maybe this morning, but you have that, I assume a wish list exists as to where we would have to put money back first.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So, Michael, do you mind if I just jump in on that a little bit as well? And so, you know, as you had talked about, some of our facilities are not yet open to the public, and, and your question was, have we adjusted the budget to sort of factor that in? Another part of, of the equation for us is, although we are preparing for reopening of some of these facilities and anticipating some costs that may, may be somewhat obvious to try to provide the safest environment for not only our employees, but also the public, but as this reopening continues to happen across the state, and as we, you know, think about or prepare for a possible resurgence, we need to make sure that we also have the flexibility to be able to respond to some of those issues within, within the budget. Our expectation is, is that over the course of the summer months, we are going to have access to much better information, particularly around the state funding. So our expectation is that we will be taking another look at our budget and making some adjustments, as Dennis indicated at the Fall Town Meeting, to adjust for that. So should we find some savings in some of the other departments that we could, could repurpose, we would absolutely look at that priority list and, and do that.
And the other thing is, the local aid cuts are projections. They may not be as bad as what we're, we're looking at here. This is the best estimate that we've been given at, at this point in time.
We, we also have to think about some of the unintended expenses that may arise. And speaking with Mike Reed a little bit and with, with Peter, you know, we don't know what our transportation costs may likely be. We don't know what's going to happen with busing because kids need to be socially distant from one another. We don't know if there'll be additional bus routes or additional buses. We don't know what type of additional counseling needs are going to be required to handle the emotional needs of the children going back to school or additional teaching or, you know, coursework because they fell behind this spring. So the challenge, I think, and I'm not speaking for the school committee, but I've had enough conversations with them to understand that, you know, there's still a big unknown, and they're cutting, it looks like, you know, they're participating and they're willingly participating, but we also have this big unknown. So I think we have to think as a board, you know, you know, we might be able to get back to the town, but I think a priority, and I'm just going to speak for myself, a priority is, you know, we need to make sure that our, our children are properly taken care of. And this has been very difficult for, you know, all students from K all the way to 12. If we can't allow these kids to fall behind. And I'm not stealing that from Michelle Obama. That's just me saying we can't allow our children to fall behind, guys. So it's just something we need to be considerate of if we do have more money available.
Yeah.
We have to, so.
If I'm, if I may just respond to that. So, so although I don't, and, and thank you, Don, I appreciate that, you know, we obviously are, are looking at every aspect of the budget with a great deal of sensitivity to try to make the most recent, least invasive reductions and, and, you know, prioritize what we can restore, and should those funds, funds become available. But I do want to just remind everybody that the CARES Act funding that came from the federal government to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that has now been made available to all 351 communities, it was $2.6 billion that the Commonwealth had received. And in this first round of funding that has been made available to cities and towns, that represents only 25% of the total funding that has been allocated and given to the Commonwealth. And so it has been made clear to cities and towns through the course of Zoom meetings and webinars that we could, could and should anticipate at some point in the future, a second round of that state funding being made available. And, and here's where I don't have a crystal ball, but I would have to anticipate that we would start to hear some conversations around additional funding being made available or released to communities sort of later in the summer as the school departments across the Commonwealth try to figure out what their reopening plan is. We have hundreds of school districts across the Commonwealth that are all facing these same challenges of providing a safe environment and, and providing services that these students need after having gone through and experienced the quarantine and the homeschooling style learning that they've, they've experienced. I would have to imagine that Desi is going to fight very hard for the next round of funding to be made available, not if, in, in part, if not in whole, to directly assist school districts with some of these costs that you're referring to.
Thank you, Mary. It was great.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Yes.
Mary, obviously, you've put a tremendous amount of time and effort into pulling all this data together. Did not go unnoticed that the email came in at quarter of 12 last night, but I digress. So I know you're working really hard. And I know for me personally, I would love to have something that I'm going to call an executive overview that helps us, helps me be better positioned to answer the questions from the residents that are calling me, asking me what's going on with the town. And, you know, just fact-based bullet points and, you know, if my, the rest of my colleagues don't feel the need for that, it's certainly something I can meet offline with you about. But I, I think I just want to be better able to explain what's going on. The numbers certainly say one thing, but, you know, we all know we're all in a lot of meetings, a lot of Zoom calls, schools, town. I just think it'd be nice to have a platform from which to what's going on and what all the work is that's going into the conversation.
Cindy, this is Don. Hey, I agree 100%. I actually spoke to Dennis about it earlier, just today, about doing just that, but, but also asking Mary to do a presentation at town meeting, kind of how, where we are, you know, here's what we were doing pre-COVID, here's where we are COVID, and explaining all the cuts and giving some detail behind the cuts and what, what the, what we're anticipating for local receipts. I think it's a great idea. We should have those at bullet point, but I would also like to have a nice presentation done at, at town meeting so that we can explain, educate our residents here in the town. So hopefully, Mary, if you didn't get that request from Dennis, I'm, I'm asking you now because we did speak about this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm going to interject. Mary has been. Yeah, well, I'm going to interject, Mary has been tasked with that, the few town meetings that she's been with already, and she's been doing a magnificent job to explain the budget, how it works, and obviously, now it's going to be, you know, this would have been budget A, but now we're working on budget B, so I think we're we're good with that, that's absolutely imperative. Yep, all right. All right, so any other questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? All right, obviously, there's nothing to vote on, it's just something we're all aware of.
Thank you. Dan, as far as the recommendations go, it it, so the board, I know formerly did not necessarily take a vote on the full budget, but we are good to forward these recommendations onward, much like we did with the budgets of the Finance Committee, because we're meeting with the Finance Committee either Thursday or Monday, so everyone's all right with that?
So, yeah, you want to take a vote for the recommendations then? That way you can have the, yeah, you can have the validation income. All right, so I will entertain a vote to a motion, excuse me, to approve the recommendations based on the updated budget numbers that were presented to to us all via CFO.
So moved.
We have a first of Mr. Biagi, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Martinez, any further discussions? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Excellent, thank you, Dennis, thank you, Mary. Mr. Biagi, April abatements.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to abate the capital improvement sewer, trash, and water charges for the month of April in the amount of $3,175.64.
We have a first of Mr. Biagi, do we have a second? Second from Mrs. McNulty, any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Thank you, Mr. Biagi. Town administrators report.
I think everybody's sick of hearing me report with all these morning meetings, but just, I know we said it before, but the departments have been working extremely closely with us to put together this budget, these these cuts are are not easy for anyone, but we certainly appreciate not just this, but we asked for a spending freeze back in in February or March, and and the cooperation's been phenomenal, so we we certainly appreciate that. A couple of things that we've been talking about, the the high school vehicle parade for the seniors, we'll be putting a code red out on that, I think everybody's aware of that, but we'll get the code red out on that on on Thursday, the beaches are going to open on Saturday, we've got the lifeguard staffing them, recycling center, we've talked a lot about, that's open just on Saturday right now, we're not doing it Sunday, and Town Hall, we're waiting to see what what happens with Town Hall as far as, you know, the phasing plans, when we can open, we've made modifications, as everyone knows in the building, you know. Hopefully, we'll be open opening to the public again soon.
Excellent, thank you, Dennis. Any old business? Well, this is all getting very old.
Agreed.
Any new business?
Dan, can you can you make a get a motion for the minutes?
Oh, did I skip over that part?
Yeah.
Oh, I did, didn't I? I crossed that out, that's why you're here, Hillary, to keep me honest. All right, so we have approval of April 13th, 27th, May 2nd, and May 11th minutes.
So moved.
Can I get a motion to approve those minutes? We have a first from Mr. Martinez, do we have a second? We have a second, Mrs. McNulty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero. You know, Hillary, I didn't have my my glasses on, so I didn't see, I skipped right over that one. Any new business?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose something on a new business. I would like to entertain changing the name of us from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. It's what most towns around us are doing, and I just wanted to see how my colleagues felt about that.
I'm very much in favor of it, so I was going to do that if I was reelected in the first meeting, I think it's the right thing to do.
Agree.
All right, is that that's something to be required by town meeting vote? I believe.
Well, certainly, you could take a motion to refer to yourselves as the Select Boards.
Okay, all right.
Dennis, isn't it, isn't it part, but isn't it part of our charter? Yeah.
It is, but the the board could certainly adopt the policy of referring to themselves as the Select Board.
Okay.
And we can, we can take the necessary changes that we need to between the charter or the bylaws or whatever else that has to be done.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to entertain, do I get to say it, or how do, or what do you want to do? How does this work?
You, your, your business, babe. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we change how we refer to ourselves as from the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board.
Second, we have a first from Mrs. McNulty, a second from Mr. Biagi, any further comments or concerns, questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Zero. All right. Very nice new business, Cindy.
Thank you for your support.
All right. Any other new business?
Just a question, actually, two question and a comment. Dennis, don't we have some executive minutes that need to be approved?
We have a lot of executive session, I don't think we've released any in quite some time, so I don't know if it's convenient now, we can certainly start the ones that no longer serve the purpose of being held in executives.
Yeah, well, even if we approve the minutes but not not release.
Sure.
You know, and and I, my final comment is, in case everyone on the board is not aware of it, looking at between the additional 600 unemployment and the 1,200 that everyone received, and the business grants that are occurring, it's it's interesting that the state aid for the schools is appearing to drop from 8.6 million to to decline by another 10, 10% and the number of cuts that have already occurred in the school department for next year, or at least have been notifications preaching to all the converted, but if that 1.5 million override needs to needs to pass.
I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a first, Mr. Connor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Biagi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Thank you very much, everyone, have a great night.
Hey, here's me, Dan. Dan, don't hang up yet.
Yeah, I'm not hanging up, what up?
This is an off-the-record comment, I know we have a contested race going in.